This brings our special meaning of the Capitola City Council to order, January 16th. May I get a real call, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Present.
Councilmember Orbach.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Clark.
Here. Will everybody join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has one proposed change to this evening's agenda, which is to delete the closed session scheduled for this evening due to a family emergency by city attorney Zutler. Deputy city attorney Burke is on the Zoom call this evening in her place.
Thank you. Additional materials?
Staff received additional materials relating to items 6A, 6B, 6C, and 6D to tonight's agenda. All additional materials were made available for public review as a part of the agenda packet and were provided to the city council in advance of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to oral communications by the public. Public will have three minutes or less to talk in items that are not on the agenda. Welcome. You can state your name if you wish.
Hi, my name is Goran Klapic. I'm a vet. I served in the Army overseas. What I want to compliment you guys is about the Capitola J Street Park. It's getting to the finishing line to make the community there safer about illegal drug use or alcohol consumption in the park. As you know, you cannot drink alcohol in a park legally. It's also, I talked to a veteran from Vietnam back in the days. He said it would be nice to have a restaurant at the Capitola Wharf when it's rebuilt. That's, I just talked to him today about a coffee place here in Capitola. Thank you very much for listening. Take care.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment?
Yeah, I wanted to come in and introduce myself. My name is Christina McCann.
Excuse me, can I say you speak into the microphone? It's not on record unless it's on the mic.
Already so loud. I just moved here and I was invited to apply for Arts Council by someone in this room. I won't name them, but I took it pretty seriously. I relocated here after.
Nina, that is on our agenda later on today, so if you just want to introduce yourself, that's fine, but we're going to go through the motion of adding people to the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Okay, it's just an introduction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So within eight weeks after moving here, I threw a potluck. I knew nobody. They had varying success. I am a business owner. In my last community, I had an extensive history of volunteering, but I felt that if I came and I put my name on a list, there's no way anyone would vote for me if they didn't know who I was. And then secondarily, I just wanted to add that if there's a better fit for me in the community, that I would be open to that. For instance, I picked up Kelly Burrito's card and I just wanted to kind of add the skill set. I'm going to leave a couple of things on the back table. It introduces me and my daughter, but I just felt that with an unknown name, that I should show up and say hello and let people know who I am.
Thank you. Welcome.
Vice Mayor members of the council. I was at the meeting last week and the reason I'm here is I think I need to say something like, it's not your fault that a council member of six years who was the mayor decided to walk out and leave you high and dry for a better offer, because I think that when people elect a candidate in this town, they expect more than that. With that being said, at the meeting, I can't remember a meeting that I participated in or watched that was more poorly run than that meeting. And what that does is it sends a message to the people on the cameras and any audience, which in this case are your bosses. They're the ones that nominate you or that vote for you and put you in the position. And when you do things that don't look organized, it doesn't make them feel good about what they did. Because a lot of people, when I talk to them, they don't really follow what goes on in the city. They just believe that you know what you're doing. People in here that are up know what they're doing. But it's important that you know that the people that are out there are your bosses. And also in that case, you are staff's bosses. Staff should not be telling you what to do. Was at the meeting last week and there was an outburst in the crowd and the city attorney was telling people to be quiet. Not her job, ever. We don't work for her or him or any of these people. They're here to get things done in this city and make you do your job better. If there's a problem in this room, it's up to you to tell these people that they need to be in line. And if you can't keep them in line, that's why the police chief is at the meeting, if they get really unruly. But that's your job. This is you running the meeting. The other thing is, is that when you come to the meeting, very, very popular now are laptops. And I don't know what's on your laptop. That's your stuff. But when you get ready to vote on something, you should not be reading your decisions you've already made at home off that laptop. You're here to hear public testimony and then after that, you decide what you want to do. So prepared notes and answers shouldn't happen. And I know you're in a dilemma with what you got to do and I wish you the best of luck and I'm not here to tell you what to do or how to do it, but I would love to see you just run better meetings. And I guess you have a training coming up and maybe that's going to be part of it where you can do that, but we need to know and have confidence in what you're doing up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Mike. I live on Sacramento. I came down today from Alameda. I arrived, exited Bay at about 3:15 in the afternoon. I waited at that intersection for probably about five minutes for the traffic on Bay to clear enough so I could actually turn off the exit ramp onto Bay. I then probably spent 15, 20 minutes navigating inching by inching by inching, worse than probably it was on one, to get through the intersection of Bay and Hill. Cars were streaming off left and right. Knob Hill is a very dangerous place, that parking lot, because people, that's one way they get around waiting, is to go through that parking lot. When I finally went through that intersection, there was a line of cars that went from Hill to Capitola Drive and then past Gales halfway to Monterey. Okay, so I know this is a topic you hear about. I know you guys, I think you guys are really into safety for the public. Having that intersection the way it is right now is making things worse, not better. There could be a fatal accident in the Knob Hill parking lot because of the way you guys in the formal council set that up. So please take action. I think Ed had a lot of good points tonight. Part of your job here is to prioritize how you spend our money, right? And I know I hear a lot about how there's all these different things, all these different choices. Your job is to prioritize. Every business here in this city prioritizes how they spend their money and you have to do that too. So if putting, you know, traffic lights in that intersection is expensive, I'm sure it is, find a way to find the money to make the money available to do that, okay? Because that's a safety issue that could be easily, easily fixed with a simple traffic light. So again, that's your job. You've got so many funds. Do your job. Prioritize how we spend money. And I'm looking forward to the rest of the meeting and I'll say more then. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it to staff comments.
I think the only staff comment I have this evening is we did open bids on the community center today and the news is good. Not prepared to share the final details yet. We need to vet the bids, make sure that they all qualify. But good news is, is it looks like we're going to have some solid bids. We got six bidders for the community center project that should be on a future coming council agenda to consider a contract for construction. More to come, but positive news so far.
Thank you. Council comments.
Just wanted to report that I went to the League of California Cities Monterey Bay Division Welcome Reception on Monday night and met many elected officials from our neighboring cities. It felt really great to be among leaders who are working to make a difference in their communities. I look forward to forging connections with those individuals and working collaboratively with our regional partners to share ideas. I also wanted to bring something else up. You know, during my campaign, I stressed the importance of diverse lived experiences being represented on city council. Our community is made up of people from all walks of life and I want to make sure that their voices are heard. While I was on the campaign trail, I heard from many residents who expressed their discontent on how difficult it is for a new person to be picked to serve on one of our advisory bodies. There is a reason we have term limits on city council. I think it's important to get a fresh set of eyes and an infusion of new ideas and creativity, especially from people with different backgrounds. I think our differences should be celebrated. Instead of appointing the same people on our commissions, it's our responsibility on council to ensure that people with new ideas have an equal opportunity to serve. So I would like to add this to a future agenda. I'd like to ask my fellow council members to consider implementing term limits to all of our commissions and committees to allow for a more diverse set of perspectives to be represented.
Okay, I just have one thing that I'd like to share. As we think about all our friends and family in the Southern California fires, that we here in Capitola think about, you know, what would we do if it happened here? And I would like to have this put on the agenda for something future where we can get the police department, our fire department, and really go through with maybe a tabletop exercise or how we're going to deal with a disaster when it happens here. So if we could put that on our future agenda, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you. That brings us to general government. Number A, appointment to the vacant city council seat.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. Tonight, I'm here to provide you a brief update on our city council vacancy and appointment process. As you guys will all remember, last Thursday, was it really only a week ago? Last Thursday, Mayor Brooks resigned from the city council. The council formally declared a vacancy and we discussed the appointment procedure to fill the vacant seat. At that time, the city council directed staff to invite the two candidates from the November 2024 election to be interviewed today on January 16th. Unfortunately, staff was not able to get both candidates tonight at their meeting. There was a previously scheduled conflict and one of the candidates was not able to attend. So we tried to find a couple of other dates that might work for the city council as well as the two candidates and unfortunately, we were not able to come up with a date that worked for everybody before our next city council meeting on January 30th. So at this time, staff would recommend holding the interviews during the regular city council meeting scheduled for January 30th at 6:00 PM and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. We have questions from the council. Seeing no questions, we will move on to item B, city council's reorganization for 2020.
So I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor, but we should probably allow public comment.
Absolutely.
And I do, I would appreciate just a formal motion and vote to accept that removing this item to the 30th. Yeah.
Thank you. I stepped ahead a little bit, so if we can have public comment now, we'll have up to three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Leslie Nielsen. I was watching the meeting last week from Zoom out of state and I called it a charade afterwards. It was a little rough to sit through that meeting. And it made me think that when I've been in leadership positions before, I'm sorry? Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. And my staff is not performing well. I like to remind them that they do work for me and that I'm here to help. So I like building high-performance teams and we have some work to do. So I echo the comments from earlier tonight. We got to get our act together. Okay, so we elected you to work for us and again, we have work to do. On this item in particular, you were elected by the community to work for us. We have a strong constituent group who believe the mere appointment of the last election candidates who lost the election in a vote by the people will not produce the result of a candidate who has strong community support and will make all efforts by that appointee less impactful. If these individuals are appointed after a transparent, community-involved process, they will have a chance to be effective instead of defensive of their appointment, right? They should appreciate that and you should not feel it is an anti-endorsement of them to do things democratically. That's how you should be thinking of doing things. Okay, use the time tonight to make sure you're doing the work of the community that elected you and discuss the best process to appoint a qualified candidate to fill the vacant seat. It is not too late to revisit the motion, the sensible motion proposed last week to accept applications for a community-involved process. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you very much, council. Again, this goes back to the meeting last week and this wasn't your fault. This was dropped on you. And it wasn't anything that had a precedent that was set with the city of Capitola. We had no procedure. You had no procedure to follow. You had to come up with one, the best possible scenario. And there have been appointments that have been made, but to the point that was made here, there was a large group of people here and I'm not talking about the shills from Santa Cruz or from Aptos that were planted here, Capitola residents. And that's the people you really need to pay attention to. These are the people that you work for. And there was a large group that came up and they said, hey, we would like to offer some kind of input because it is a tough situation. Because in the reality of it is, I know both Margot and Enrique. They're both wonderful people. They came in third and fourth and don't just ignore that, okay? Two of you that had no experience overwhelmingly were selected by the incumbent and anybody that's been here for any period of time, incumbent almost always wins. That's a message from your bosses. They said, we're going to give you new people a chance rather than somebody that we believe hasn't delivered for us. hasn't delivered for us. And bless Enrique's heart, we put Enrique on this council. We'll have three people with zero experience and two people with two years, total of four years of experience on this council. Never, you can check with, with the question man over there and ask him, that's never existed. There's always been a plethora of, of experience on this council. And it's good. Cause when you get in that position, you don't know what you're doing from the beginning. You have to learn and it takes a while. Takes a couple of years actually. So I didn't like the irreverence where you discounted your bosses and said, we're going to do what we want to do and we don't want your input. Because what you got to remember is it's a cruel city. And in two years, there will be another election. And if you disregard what these people tell you, that's how they get back. That was the message they sent to Margot. And it does happen. So you have a choice. You can embrace these people who are your bosses or you can just do what you want. It's your turn. Good luck.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Great to be here. So, um, one of the points I made seven days ago was that we should not focus on the expedient, quick way to a solution, but we should take time, be transparent, have it be truly community based. So you had the buy-in and the support and the momentum to move the city forward. Okay. In the comments, after you decided to do something that was expedient, you talked about how it was so important to get moving. We have all these important issues in front of us. Clock's ticking. Time is, time is valuable. Well, what's happening now? We're not going to get there for another two weeks. And, and who knows what could happen between now and then. Okay. So I endorse what Leslie said. I endorse what Ed just said. You have a chance to use the time effectively to build community support for what you're doing. Again, th- this is not a politically motivated situation by the community. We want the best team at that desk helping us make the right decisions, long-term decisions for the city. Some of you are very politically ambitious. I respect that. We're here. We have, we have skin in the game in this community and we want to see you guys perform in a way that reflects that for the entire community. Okay. Now, what can you do in two weeks? Well, there's a good example because Pittsburgh in the East Bay had a similar situation happen with one of their city council members being elected to the board of supervisors in that area. So what did they do? In a two-week period, they had an interview, they, they had an application process. They had 24 applicants apply. They had a very detailed interview process where 24 went to four, and then they had a selection process, all within two weeks. So we can do that here if we have the will and if we're open to actually having the community involved and having this be supported in a way that everybody can get behind it. Okay. So again, you guys make the decisions here. We don't do that. We're just giving you our input. But what Ed said is right. You know, you're all going to be up for reelection at some point in time and, and we will, this is, this is a key issue for us. Let me go back to that as we go forward. Okay. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, that'll bring us to, uh, council comments. Right over on this side. Nothing?
Um, yeah, I guess my only comment would be, um, you know, carryover from our last week's meeting, um, that we heard from our community. And there was, um, a motion on the table and I think, um, it was, uh, defeated, um, to have a community input. Um, and, um, I sit here tonight to ask our council if we want to reconsider that or if we would like to proceed with the motion that was passed, um, um, that I did vote for on that. But, um, I continue here, community outcry, uh, for our community to be involved in the process. And I would like to open that up for council comments if anybody has any additional. So no motion, just, um, just deliberation, I guess, between our council.
Thank you for coming to this meeting and, um, for providing your feedback to us. Your voices are important as well. And I know, Ed, you've been on council with your years of service and I value that. At the same time, we also are a city of many, many different people, many residents, and they did vote on this recent election. Margot did get over a thousand votes. That means over a thousand people voted for her. And we have been, you know, consistently, pretty consistently getting emails in support of her. So there are people who are also, you know, people who also want to see her back on council and back in the seat. Um, I, I don't know about how I feel about having, I mean, I'd like to hear from our other council members about having an open application process, but I stand by what, you know, the, the motion I, I, um, made last week about this being a democratic process and the candidates who ran, um, you know, just a few months ago had their vision that they shared and a platform. They talked to the community members and the community members voted. But I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Wouldn't be opposed to looking at the other options that, uh, Councilmember Jensen brought up. Um, I would like to say that several people did send in letters and some were in favor of, uh, candidates by community. Some people were in favor of the third person that was, had the highest votes. And I think there was more leaning that way that we saw that came in that are attached to the agenda. But, uh, it's a difficult situation. You know, we, we are trying to do the right thing for everybody. I respect all three people that came in here and, and spoke about the ideas. I just don't know if that's the way to get to it for several reasons. Not because it's the quickest way, but how do we pick out of the four people, um, in the process of putting it out there to everybody? Uh, it wouldn't be questions I would have to ask city manager or maybe Mr. Jensen, Councilmember Jensen, but how we could get to that point to make a good decision for the community.
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll just reiterate my thoughts from the previous council meeting, which is that we just had a free and fair election where anybody who was interested in serving our community had the opportunity to do so, put their ideas and their platform out to the public. The general population of Capitola voted, uh, in order of their preference for city council members. And to open it up to an application, um, of people who did not go through that process and who were not voted on from the general population, I believe would be circumventing the democratic process, uh, and creating an outsized opportunity for a niche subset of our population to put somebody that they would like rather than who was just in the most recent election. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Jamie? And can we, can we built in a process for this? So in the future, we don't have to make this really hard decision.
We could, we could try to develop a policy moving forward for what to do around vacancies. You know, but what state law does is it defines basically, council is the authority to appoint or call an election and has parameters about how soon the appointment needs to be and how soon the election would need to be. So as long as we're operating within those broad parameters, we could develop a policy. Of course, a future council could always change. Um, and one of the things, I've done a fair bit of research and looking at other cities that have gone through vacancies. And I think in many cases vacancies are just different. You know, it's different if it occurs four weeks into someone's four-year term and/or if it occurs four weeks before their term expires. Um, so it might be a little bit challenging to try to set up too much of our prescribed system, but I think it's something we definitely could look at if the council wanted us to.
Um, in reference to your, uh, question, uh, Vice Mayor, um, what I was, what I was talking about was an open, fair process. I completely agree that we had two qualified candidates that ran, uh, for a thing. Um, and, but at the time people voted, they're voting for two. Um, and they're both highly qualified. I would hope that they would be a part of an application process. Um, but I've, I've personally heard very strongly from the community and that's where my motion was made last week. Um, you know, with engage in that process. So I think, you know, collaboration amongst all of us to make sure we include those two and have an open process. So our community feels like they're heard to resolve this situation. Um, it's something that I would like to continue deliberation before any motions or anything to just see what kind of feedback from the council if we could get to that point.
Rings a me, a few more questions probably for the city manager and the clerk. How, how would we get to that point of the applications? How fast would we be able to have them turned in and then get to the point where we brought it back to city council where we pick from the four top people?
So I can share a little bit on that. Staff can prepare an application. There would be, I had some, if this council directs staff to prepare an application, I would have some questions about what you would like on the application for one thing. The amount of turnaround time, like the time period for which staff can accept applications. I would also like guidance on from the city council. This is at your discretion. Um, for example, the requirements to be a council member for the city of Capitola still apply to the person who is appointed to fill this vacancy. So the person who is appointed must be at least 18 years of age, a resident of the city of Capitola and a registered voter in Capitola. So the types of questions we can ask on the application to kind of, we can't appoint someone who doesn't live here, for example. So typically we would ask name, address, are you 18 years of age or your birth date? Are you a registered voter in Capitola? And then we would have to verify that information before the person could take office. Um, in terms of other things on the application, I would ask for guidance from the city council. Uh, in terms of the timeframe for how long to accept applications, I would also ask for guidance, but staff can prepare those things dependent on council's direction.
I think the challenge would come down to finding, you know, as we've gone through this process, we've been trying to figure out times when council members are available. And unfortunately, people's schedules are pretty impacted for the next couple of weeks. So, um, we can certainly do that. My suggestion would be if we did an application process to probably focus more on a resume rather than answering questions. I think in this day and age with internet research and chat GPT and everything else, I think, I don't know what you'd really get out of questions other than, you know, who, I think you might get more just from a resume, basically basic experience than you would from, from questions in that format. I think the biggest challenge would be finding the time then to go through the applications. If we got more than three, four, five, six, like how would we do that in terms of allocating our time? So we're happy to do it. If that's the process the council wants, we're also happy to follow through on the process you laid out last meeting. We're open to direction either way.
Another question to that is who will be the ones selecting this group of four from the candidates?
That's really up to the council to decide. I mean, I think you could appoint an ad hoc subcommittee. Um, you could also do it in public as a full council. Um, I don't think staff feels empowered necessarily to do that, uh, on your behalf. So I think probably my suggestion would be either an ad hoc subcommittee of the council to vet down to four, maybe or three, whatever your number is, or do it as a full council.
Any thoughts on that, Councilmember Jensen?
Um, if there's, are there any more additional comments? We, uh, I don't want to cut you off. So is there any additional comments that we want to make before we move to the next level? I just don't want to cut you off. It looks like you had a comment you wanted to.
I just want to reiterate that the highest vote getter in the election that just happened had over a thousand votes. And we've heard from what, you know, a dozen people, 20 people, uh, in opposition. We've heard from probably just as many, uh, in favor. And, and I just don't think it would be fair to all those who voted in the most recent election to do anything other than honor those votes. Thank you.
And I have to agree. Um, I think, you know, in terms of who to choose for this fifth seat, the choice should be made by us because we were elected by the people. I, I know this is a tough decision and it sounds like we're kind of split right in the middle.
Again, I maybe can ask this to the city manager. How would we get the group together? Who would they be? And how many would there, there possibly be to make the decisions?
We're talking about how would we go through the applications to determine?
By committee, yes.
Um, I thi- I think there's really two basic choices is, is that you either delegate the authority to a subset of yourselves or to somebody else. Alternatively, you meet as a group, as a body at a public meeting and you look at the applications and you make a decision, make a selection. So one process could be, if we chose a different path, would be to accept applications for a period of time. And then on the 30th, rather than interview, you could review the applications at that meeting. Uh, and then you could make a determination at that meeting whether you wanted to interview anyone or whether the candidates were so well-known to you that you were willing to make the selection then and there. That is another way you could do it. Um, I'm not suggesting you change course. I'm just trying to offer alternatives if you're interested.
To elaborate on what I think that process could look like trying to, uh, hear everybody's comments would be, um, if each one of us appointed somebody from the community that on an ad hoc committee, they would bring the applicants together, um, vet them out and make a recommendation to us. Let's say there's four and we do a ranked choice voting. And so we could come to us, we would have a resume or notes from that ad hoc group and that we would do a ranked choice voting. And we could do that at a meeting, ranked choice voting. It would make a decision immediately, obviously. Um, because with ranked change, choice voting, um, would, um, resolve that. And that could just be a process. And, you know, I think it'd be collaboration to get to a point that everybody felt comfortable, if that's where we want to go.
I mean, that sounds like it could almost be a panel of eight. It could be the four council members and one of their choosing.
My suggestion was that there'd be an ad hoc committee of the community that would sort through the applicants that would be turned in and that that would be then referred to us as the top applicants, whatever number everyone would like to agree on that would come to us. And there'd be a ranked choice voting that we would make, um, in regard to council member or box comment that we were elected to make a final decision, but to also balance what our community is asking for us to hear them, no matter if it's 20, 40, 60, or 80, or 2000. I think this is a process. If we go back and I have not done the research, but we went back and looked at the process that's been done in the past and never went back to the previous vote for a previous date. It's always been an application process, which I've been informed, I could be mistaken. And so that's why I just going, trying to connect back to the history of Capitola and making sure that this is a, a community-first approach. And so again, I don't want to jump to a motion. I want to work collaboratively to understand where we are and talk this through.
Further thoughts? Yes?
Yeah. Uh, I just want to state that I wouldn't feel comfortable, uh, delegating our authority to make the selection to a group of citizens, even if we were able to appoint those on an individual basis. I think that this import, this decision is so important that we should take it upon ourselves to make it, not delegate it to anybody else.
If it's going to make the community happy that we have an application process, and if that's what you two are, are, are wanting to propose, because it sounds like we're stuck and I don't want to be stuck. I don't want to be talking about this forever, then could we have an application process? Have people submit their resumes who are interested and we decide, we, the four of us, decide who we want to appoint on January 30th.
May I just interject? Based on timing and deadlines, the agenda packet for the January 30th meeting will be published next Friday, the 24th. Staff could prepare an application tomorrow, but what would the deadline be for turnaround? Just a request for clarity.
It would probably be just before the agenda coming out on the 30th.
So the agenda goes out 72 hours prior. Typically, the city publishes an agenda the Friday before the council meeting. So that would be next Friday. So a week from tomorrow essentially. So would the council desire a deadline for applications to be within a week?
Yes, I, I think so.
And I, uh, to your point, Councilmember President, that's about working together and so I compromise. I, you know, I'm, I'm open to a process. So I was just throwing out one to get, get compromised or to get a conversation going. So I appreciate your input.
Further, I, I think the two individuals that we are, um, inviting back first, the questioning on the, on the candidacy, I think there'll probably be on the candidacy, I think they'll probably be in the top vote getters, coming from our group or whichever group that's out there that picks it. So I would not be opposed to that.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion that we would have an application process. And I don't want to be on my motion for the timeline, so I look to staff to clarify that. But there'd be an application process, that the application could come back to us directly as a council, and that we would proceed with a ranked choice voting on whatever night of the next city council meeting that meets the schedule, and that we, as a council, would pick that night on a ranked choice voting system. And we would then, at that meeting, elect our next council member so we can continue on with the work of the city.
Question about that. Would a ranked choice voting system mean that we are ranking every candidate that applies?
We would take all the applications that, if, if I was trying to get to a point that we'd have an ad hoc group that would reduce if, you know, let's say we had fifty, I mean, we might have to go through fifty. That's why I was proposing to have a group of community members. But I heard that some opposition did. So with that not coming in, we would then, I guess, get that, all the application to come in, and we would rank them. And so that, that's the best way to get to, because we're a party of four right now. So I'm trying to move the process forward.
Well, what if to streamline that process, we could, the four of us could nominate people from that list and then do rank, yes, sorry. What if the four of us could nominate individuals from the list that is provided and then do rank choice from there? I think if we, you know, I don't know how many people there are going to be, but I would have a hard time ranking, you know, twenty-five people in order from greatest to least.
I could offer a suggestion. I think sort of somewhere in between might be, you could try, starting with the rank, your top three each, and see what the overlap is, you know. Right, like, potentially, if you had fifteen applicants, that might get pretty hard. But just identifying the top two or three each, you could start with even just identifying the top one. There might be uniform consensus, and you don't even have to proceed any further than that. So, you know, I think you could sort of move from A to B, starting out with, okay, who's our top one? Do we have consensus? If not, who's everyone's number two? Who's everyone's number three? Until you really saw where the points sort of, where it ended up. So there's a motion on the floor, I think.
Correct. There's a motion on the floor, so.
I'd like to clarify on the motion. Would it, would it be the four of us deciding on all the applicants that come in, getting the top two or three, and then during the council meeting, voting that person in to take the vacancy?
If that's amendment to the motion, I can accept that.
With that being said, I'll second it.
Can I have some clarification of staff? My understanding was, the motion was that we would put out an application. I'd like to some little bit of clarification, if the council wouldn't mind about sort of the content of the application, if it's focused more on experience, or if there are questions involved. Then secondarily, my understanding was that you'd get all the applications ahead of the next meeting when we publish the agenda, and then at that meeting on the thirtieth, you would choose. Is that?
Correct. And I think the question would be, trying to go to councilmember Peterson's standpoint, if there's a whole bunch of applications, I think we'd have to address that that evening. You know, we're just have to work it through it. So I don't, unless you have amendment to my motion or process, you know, I would be open to that.
No, I would be happy with the process of all the applications coming to us, us reviewing them before the meeting, discussing them, deliberating during the meeting, and then making a selection on the thirtieth.
Does staff need any more clarification?
Yes. I just want to clarify really clearly the deadline for the applications, because this is what we're going to be publishing out to the public. And so, like I said before, the agenda packet is typically scheduled to be published on January twenty-fourth. In order to make sure that all applications are included, or the list of names is included correctly to include everybody, I would love to establish from the city council a hard deadline for the applications. Most city clerks love a hard deadline. I'm one of them. And so this is my opportunity to get it in the minutes.
Since I have the motion, I would just, would like to defer to my other councilmembers to make sure that when we focus on people, inclusion, there being included, would that be realistic timeframe opposing one week? And I'd be open for comments on that.
I think it would be. And if we did it just resume style, instead of a bunch of different questions out there, but if it was resume style.
I agree. I think one week is sufficient, and it's right before the twenty-fourth. So next Thursday as the deadline, so you can.
So Thursday, close of business, so five P M? Thursday midnight? I just really specifically, sorry, I just want to make sure that we're advertising as clearly as possible to the public.
Thursday at five.
Thursday, five P M. Great. And then really quickly, just another request for clarification for resume-style application. So as I said before, we could ask name, address, are you a registered voter, birth date, to verify the basic qualifications to be appointed to this seat. What additional questions? Like, for example, would you like them to upload an attachment resume to the application? Or would you like them to input any question, like a question about their current employer? Like, what information would the council seek on this application?
I think a resume or a C V would be good.
I think we all have submitted questions. Would we be opposed to providing those four questions that, I think we all locked a couple of questions into the city to give some guidance for them to follow up on, or would it just be resume? And I'm open to either way.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, are those questions available for putting them on part of the application process?
Certainly, staff could include those questions on the application.
So we would go resume, and then the questions?
So a total of four questions would be included, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
With wait, I mean, nothing be waited by this, that the four questions might help guide the conversation, and it also help with their resume at the same time.
I agree with that. I think a little bit more information in addition to their resume would be helpful for, you know, like, the previous two candidates I'm very familiar with, but I don't know who's going to apply. So, yeah, just a little bit more would be helpful, the four questions. Thank you.
So just to clarify, are we hashing this out on the thirtieth? Then we'll just have all of the people who have applied, and we'll talk about our top one, two choices, and decide that day. Is that the plan?
That's the motion on the table, yes.
Yes. So we have a motion, we have a second. Staff has enough clarification?
Yes.
Do you mind if I read the motion into the record before we take a vote? So right now, I have a motion from Councilmember Jensen to direct staff to create an application for the city council vacancy to include basic information, a resume, and four questions, with a deadline of Thursday, January twenty-third at five P M, to come back to the city council on January thirtieth for city council review and to make an appointment. Good?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilor Orbach?
Aye.
Councilor Peterson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Okay, that'll bring us to item B, the city council's reorganization for twenty-twenty-five. That's for a new vice mayor, new mayor. And like we mentioned earlier, I think it's very important to have the fifth member here for us to make those recommendations. I'd like to, we don't have a presentation on this, is that correct?
We don't. If the council would like to continue this item, you guys can do so by motion and vote.
Thank you. So any council questions?
No questions. I guess comments are later, huh?
We'll get to the comments. Now, we'll open this up to public comment on item B. Seeing none, go to council comments.
It's obvious in my mind who should be mayor, so I feel like we should just appoint Joe today. I don't think the fifth person should be in either the mayor or vice mayor spot. So I'm also ready to make a motion for vice mayor today, just to get, to be done with it. I don't know how folks feel tonight.
My comment, I feel very strongly that we should have a full council. I look at each council person represents twenty percent of our community, and I would feel very strongly about having a full council to move forward through that, which we could agendize immediately after our appointment on the thirtieth after swearing in. Is that correct?
Yes. I guess that is a good question, is would we be swearing in the new council member on the thirtieth, or would be swearing them in after that date?
I would think that we should do it that day and move forward to the business of the seat.
Okay.
At this point, it looks like we'll be holding this matter over to the next meeting on the thirtieth? I don't believe we need a motion, no. Thank you. Moving on to see city council's representation on regional boards and city advisory bodies.
So this one is on your agenda because the, these are nominations the city council makes for city selection committee. And the city selection committee is coming up on the twenty-seventh. So the vice mayor will be representing the city at that meeting. Capitola will be in position to assume a seat on LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. And right now, the city's nominee for that position is former mayor Brooks. So we need another nominee to take, for Joe to take to the meeting on the twenty-seventh. There's more information about LAFCO up there on the screen. You may also recall that Yvette Brooks was nominated to be the non-voting representative on three C E. If anyone is interested in that, they're certainly welcome to take that position. It's an optional position for the city, as the voting member on the three C E board is switching over to Scotts Valley this term.
Staff also plans to bring forward an entire comprehensive look at all of the city's representatives on all of the regional bodies, once a five, a fifth member of the city council is appointed. So there will be another opportunity to review these appointments at a later date. But the city selection committee meetings are timely.
Are we looking for appointments then for these, or?
It's a nomination. The actual appointment will take place on the twenty-seventh, but we are looking specifically for a nomination for LAFCO.
See no nominations, I would like to nominate myself.
I'll second that.
All right, that brings us to three C E.
And again, the three C E spot is optional. Really, the voting position is scheduled to switch over to Scotts Valley. If anyone is interested, they're welcome to attend the meetings as a non-voting representative. You can also attend as a member of the public. So it's really, if there's somebody who's interested in assuming the role, it's fine. You can also just attend some meetings as a member of the public as well. So we don't need somebody for that spot.
I think representation on that is important, and I would be happy to do that.
I'll second that. Any other nominees we need to look for?
Those are the three timely ones for this item.
Okay. Any further motion needed?
I think you may want to take public comment and then.
Great, we'll do that. We'll take, we have the presentation with the council questions. Looks like none. We'll do public comment. Seeing none? Council comments? Thank you.
So what if you could make a motion to sort of ratify the appointments of Vice Mayor Clark and Councilmember Jensen to the boards, LAFCO and three C E, non-voting classes?
I'll make a motion to wrap that up.
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Please.
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Thank you. Brings us to D, city council appointments, city advisory bodies. Our recommended action is to appoint members of the public to the city Capitol Art and Cultural Commission. I believe this is the only one we'll be making nominations on today.
The Art and Cultural Commission does have significant work that they need to get going. They obviously plan the summer art and cultural series every summer. And so staff is requesting that we get that board established. You may wish to appoint four of the five public members, as well as the artist and art, art group representative. That would allow the committee to get going, start work, and then you could defer that final appointment until you have a fifth council member. So that's kind of the real key one that we are looking for appointments on.
And then we would defer the other ones, the finance, historical museum, and environmental commission, until we have that fifth member, correct?
Yeah, we could defer that to the thirtieth.
Thank you.
There is in addition, an alternate position for a Capitola representative on the Santa Cruz County R T C's bicycle advisory committee. They've submitted an application and the city of Capitola can provide a recommendation on that. The R T C is the appointing body, and they've requested that the city take a look at that as well. It is for an alternate position, and the application was included in this week's agenda packet.
Is that a time-sensitive appointment, or could it be on the thirtieth also?
It could wait. It's an alternate position, so it's a non-voting member.
So I appreciate the approach of the moving forward the Arts and Culture Commission and leaving an open position for the new council member when they are brought in on the thirtieth to, so that they have a voice in that. So if we could, I would suggest moving forward of the appointment process so that Arts and Culture Commission move forward on their business.
And for clarification, we're allowing each council member to appoint their own person?
So no. For this body, it is a council decision as a body. So you guys may direct me to add the names to the sheet here, but the group as a whole needs to ratify the appointments. And so if you'd like to list names, I'll put them up on the screen. And then, once you guys have listed all of the names, I will need a motion and a vote to appoint them as a, as a whole body.
Thank you. I guess we'll start down at this end. If there's anybody that, that Councilmember Peterson wants to see up there.
I'd like to propose Jill Langry.
I'd like to see Roy Johnson as the art professional.
My recommendation would be to maybe focus, if you're going to go through this process, you could focus on the at-large positions and then, and then talk about the art professional and the artist independently, because I think there's fewer applications. It just lines up that way a little bit better, because there's, there's five total at-large positions. So then each one of you sort of gets one nominee, if you will. And then you can talk about the artist and the art professional. As a suggestion, you can proceed in a different direction if you'd like.
I'd like to see Esther Sylvan.
I would like some cooperation from the other council members on my appointment. I would like to appoint Lori Hill, but she's noted on her application that she really just wants to fulfill the, her commitment if was she was appointed for the next, I think it's approximately eight weeks until the Fugon Yard, which she is so instrumental in, in our community. And then she was wanting to step down, I think, for reasons, personal reasons and stuff. So I would like to nominate Lori Hill, but knowing that she's going to be vacating the position relatively quick in eight weeks, that Karen, I mean, that Karen Anderson would then fill in for that, if everybody could agree to that. Thank you.
Kind of throws a little wrench into it, but yeah, we will be the ones voting on the next. the next person at large, correct?
What do you mean?
After a resignation from...
Correct, yeah. So when there's a resignation, it's considered an unscheduled vacancy. That's the, the formal term. It does trigger specific requirements through California Government Code. For example, we have to publish a notice in the newspaper stating that an unscheduled vacancy has occurred, we have to accept applications for that vacancy. Then we would bring the applications back to the city council to do that. In addition, our Art and Cultural Commissions, our commissioners are required to file Form 700s, which you now all have the joy of doing as council members. So our Art and Cultural Commissioners will also have to file that. So Lori Hill, if appointed, would have to file, you know, her regular Form 700. She would also have to file a leaving office statement, and then the new person would file an assuming office statement, and some other considerations when making that decision.
Thank you for the clarification, but just to have it into the record, I would just, I would like to be, my nomination really was going to be Karen Anderson, but with the, the history of Lori Hill, I will, I will appoint her, but hopefully we can reflect back onto this conversation and know really what my full intent was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to clarify, you would like to nominate Lori? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to see Mary Beth Cahalan at large. As we have several other people, new applicants and others, and we're looking for one more at large. Does anybody have a recommendation?
I thought we were waiting on that for the new council member.
Okay, we'll leave that one for the new council member. Should we move on to the artist then? Great. I would like to see Roy Holmberg as the artist, and then the art professional as the other Roy that we were talking about earlier. We'll leave the one at large for the next council member who come on board next month.
Like I said earlier, this decision is a whole-body decision, and so if someone on the council would like to make a motion, we can then make these appointments.
I'll move to approve the...
Public comment.
Excellent. I'm sure there's some folks out that want to talk about this, because we have, the most people seeking to get into the boards is the Art and Cultural Commission. So by all means, let's have public comment on this. Thank you. Seeing none, we can bring it back to council comments. I think we're all in agreeance at this point. Can we get a roll call? I'm sorry, can we get a motion? I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve the appointees as discussed.
I second that.
Now, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
So do we need to talk anymore about the upcoming other committees and positions? Staff, any comments?
No, I think we're good on the other boards and commissions until the 30th. At that point, then we'll be asking you to fill out the Finance Advisory Committee, Museum Board, and the Commission on the...
Yeah, I'd like to thank, I'd see people out there that are waiting for those appointments. So thank you for, for being here and having the interest. And we'll get to it, I promise.
One follow-up? Just so that the Thursday, I mean, the 30th meeting, we also put out something to the candidates so that they're prepared to, some of their research, because these appointments will happen right after somebody's sworn in. So to have them prepared that, are we able to provide them a link to the applications, so they can do some research so they're prepared to make their motions and move forward?
Absolutely. So you would like the agenda material shared with the, the two candidates, or however many candidates we receive? Absolutely, yeah, that's definitely possible.
And just encourage them to understand what the process will be that night if they are selected, you know, so they understand we're appointing the Arts Commission, we want to get through fact, we want to get on to the work. I just, if that can be communicated really clear to them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Looks like that takes care of item D. And again, earlier, we talked about closed session, which has been counseled. So that'll bring us to the end of the meeting. I thank everybody for coming. I know it's been a process. I swear we'll get to where we need to be. Thanks for everybody for coming. See everybody on the 30th, and be safe. Thank you.